Good evening, everyone. Thank you so much for joining us this evening here at Emerson Park Pavilion. We're really excited and happy to discuss today's topic and today's agenda. At this point, the time is 6:08. Men would call us in the east order. Tucker Webber. Andy Johnson is excused, Ben Bykley. Chris Peters. Paul Pinky. Pete Gatlin.
Here.
Ann Scotter.
Here.
Mark Stone.
Here.
Are you ready?
Here.
Elaine Daly.
Here.
Chris Kerr.
Here.
Tiffany Latimer.
Here.
Michael Lydia is excused, Ryan Cooley.
Present.
Elaine McNamee.
Present.
Please stand for the College of Legion. I salute you.
The flag is in the hands of the United States of America. And to the Republic, which is standing on our nation, under God, indivisible, the Lord.
Please stand for a moment, Tyler. Thank you. Tonight we have a wonderful presentation to provide for the legislature as well as the public, as well as folks that are tuning in online this evening. It's been a long time coming. It's been a lot of planning and development for Emerson Park, in particular, Dogal Island. And so today we have some consultants here with us and we're going to open it up with our director, Steve Lynch, to guide us through the presentation.
Good morning, Madam Chair. Thank you, Madam Chair, and welcome, everybody, down to beautiful Emerson Park. What a great day to be down here. As the chairwoman said, we have Peter Trowbridge and James Vidal from Trover's Wolf Landscape Architects, the primary lead on this project. And we have myself and my staff members, Senior Planner David Nelson's here. And we have Parks Superintendent Doug Duffield who goes here to present the presentation. So this slide is called Building Towards the Future, and this is really about setting the stage for where we are now. In 2015, there was a master plan that was done for Emerson Park. And I'm happy to say that the legislature, the county legislation in 2015 unanimously adopted the master plan and gave direction to the staff to please move forward and see if you can implement this plan piece by piece, phase by phase, so that we could realize it. The Emerson Park Master Plan is not a design plan. It was a plan made up of goals and aspirations and objectives. The idea was not to start off by designing something. The idea was to start off with goals and programming for the park and then design around that. In 2016, we went out and we did a request for proposals for a landscape architecture plan because we firmly believe that having a good set of designers and landscape architects working for us and working with us as a park would set the stage for consistency year in and year out so that we could have cohesive park design throughout Emerson Park, which of course is a pretty large park. After 2016, we started putting some preliminary designs together and going out to secure grant funds to start making some of these improvements. And then 2017, we secured a grant with matching funds from the county and from the Emerson Foundation for capital improvements. And that was over $960,000. And that's some of what you see. It's a little sensitive. And that's what you see for 2018 to 2020 on Dogal Island now. The new pathways that I hope some of the public is enjoying, walking around the park, the access from the White Bridge Road, the pedestrian bridge coming in, and so on and so forth. In 2019, funded completely by a grant from the Emerson Foundation, we brought in a programming consultant that does nothing but specialize in public spaces and how to activate public space. They were called Peterman Redevelopment Ventures. And they came up and they spent a good amount of time and we had quite a bit of public input saying, what are the programming goals that we could really look at to activate Emerson Park and really take advantage of this incredible piece of land at the top of the Lost Lake and do it for the benefit of everybody in here with them? So the major goal was to activate the park and generate revenue at the same time. The second goal was to prioritize the recommendations that they came up with after this public participation process. And those were, number one, focus on Dogal Island. Take that small container space right on the, surrounded by water and right on the edge of the lake and make that your primary activity center so that it looks like there's things always happening on the island. Put in a destination playground. There hasn't been a really decent playground in Emerson Park for many, many years. And that's because playgrounds cost a lot of money. And we wanted to do it and do it big and do it right. We have a destination playground designed now for Emerson Park. Another one to keep people here once they get here is including concessions. I mean, how many people have come to the park and said, I wish I could get something to eat at the park? So that's a big one. And even you'll see now with the new pathways over there, there are pull-offs with food trucks. And that's part of the programming that we'll do. But we're going to take it a step further. And as you'll see, there's development of a concession area and a food court included. And number four, a properly sized concert venue. And we'll talk a little bit about that when we get to it. And number five, up-graded restrooms to serve the public and to serve people at events and people that come here for all the things that this park can offer. In 2020, with that programming plan that Emerson Foundation provided the funding for, we came to the county legislation and we said, we want to activate Dogal Island. We want to do a design for Dogal Island. So the legislature stepped up and they said, okay, we'll fund the next stage of the design development. And I want to talk a little bit about what that design development is. What you're going to see tonight is going to look like finished drawings. It's going to look like that's exactly what we're going to build. Now, there's a reason why it looks like that, but it's not necessarily exactly what's going to be built. It's a conceptual design and an operational framework. It's really how the pieces get fit together between a concert venue, a destination playground, boat access, new concessions and restrooms. All of those things, it's really how they knit together and are integrated and make a complete workable whole from a design perspective and from an operational perspective. We had to work with our landscape architects to come up with a pretty finished level of design so that we can put costs associated with that. So we can associate costs with that. So we know this is the level of finish and fit that we're looking for. And that helps us understand what the design costs could be. So the final design for construction, if we can get there, if we collectively say, let's move forward and we can get there, the final designs will yet to be done. The pieces will be in the places that we show you tonight because that's the way they work together. But the final design, you know, you might say, I would like to see a bigger stage or a smaller stage or a different type of roof on that building. Don't worry about it. That'll come down the line when we really get into the design. So I want you to keep that in mind as we move forward. And that's what I have. And I'm going to introduce James Vidal from Trover's Wolf Landscape Architects. It's going to take you through the dejà.
Thank you, Steve. So as Steve said, you know, this is, this is a preliminary design at this point. But, you know, the process that we went through, this design process together, was really a collaborative one between us and the county and really finding that vision for the park. Just because such an amazing setting, you're excited to be a part of it and help us. So when we began the process, we really looked at the history of the island, at reflecting on its history. And from these images that you can see, as you realize it, Emerson Park and Dogal Island were once this amazing historic destination with roller coasters, merry-go-rounds. So there were all of these structures out here and it was quite a regional destination. So part of this process would aim almost to then, and really kind of trying to breathe that life back into, into the park and really make it this regional destination. So I'm handing it to you. So currently, you know, it's really a cherished destination among, I mean, there's a lot of events occurring here. There's the Rand with Park Show. You have the Fort John fireworks, you know, the booze festival. All these events occur on the island. So as part of this design, we really want to make a space that creates a really good setting and really has those amenities for all those activities. So not just thinking about a couple of things, you know, associated with the events and things such as concerts, but really thinking about all the events that are going on. And then also the destination playground. Like Steve said, there's a playground out on the, on the island. But, you know, it's in need of upgrade. And planning a real big regional destination playground is something that can really kind of create this amazing space, maybe an environment really walkable. So then thinking about that, one thing we wanted to do when we started the process is take a step back and really think about what is out there on the island? And what are these sort of existing pieces that we can capitalize on and really make an authentic design that really works with the island itself? So a couple of main things we really noticed were the open views. I mean, when you step out on the island, you see these open views of the lake and it's just stunning. Then as well, there's a really strong east-west axis going through the site. So really building off that and kind of creating a central node space right in the middle of the island, which will be essentially a lot of act, a lot of activity occurring there and really kind of generating a lot of interest in that central area. And currently, it's arranged extremely well. Where you have kind of this open lawn down in the lower right area that we worked with a concert promoter in Ithaca, Dance Smalls Presents. And we looked at, you know, the size that you would need for a certain size concert. And it's actually really well sized to be scalable for many different sized venues for many different sizes of concerts. Then moving to the upper right area, the destination playground area, that space in general can be scalable as well. And it's set back from the water, so it's a really good, really good location for a destination playground. We've compared it with other destination playgrounds that we've worked on. And we feel like there's sufficient area there to really create that there. Another major goal of the project was to make a universally accessible and inclusive design. So currently, as part of the master plan, we started to implement some of those pathways. You can see the dark blue lines. So slowly, that network of pathways is working for the island. And then as part of the project, looking at down in the lower right, continuing the pathways around the island, really creating a waterfront promenade that can create this nice waterfront experience right out in front of there. Other features include a potential boat dive area. So currently, there's not really a boat dive space right out from the lake. So providing protection for that as well. So considering all these features, then we advanced it and developed it into a plan. We went through several iterations with the county, looking at different combinations, different locations. And I think we settled on something that works really well with the study of the island. We'll go into detail then, large plans and further spots, but just to give you a general idea of the plan. You have the concert venue down in the lower right area. You have the, the destination playground located in the upper right space. And then these passive zones where you have picnic shelters and other rental shelters kind of in the other, upper right area and the lower left area. And one thing you can really notice with this plan is that continuous waterfront promenade that we're starting to create down there. So really making that, that space and that space on waterfront feel like it's on, we're really, really using that to its full potential. So looking at the concert venue area actually south here. What we're proposing essentially is a stage venue that's scalable. You know, like a workforce, smaller intimate concerts and also larger scale concerts, bigger ones. But then having below it a waterfront terrace. So imagine yourself kind of coming out here on the weekend, you know, being able to sit out in front of the water and have your coffee right on the lakefront, really creating that nice setting for where you want. And then also the boat docked down in that area. So there's potential to rebuild or it's actually the sea wall is, is near reconstructed sometime in the future. So, so providing boat docked along with that. And then really creating this nice area where boats can pull up, disembark and enjoy the whole time. Then moving further along, on the waterfront promenade, you'll notice that the backhouse building is no longer there. So one thing Steve talked about was really creating this concessions, backhouse and central building. So that would be located up in the center of the island and would really open up those panoramic pieces of the lake. Then moving over to the other side, the left side, you can see some informal seating areas and kind of terrace space where people can sit down there, really enjoy the sunsets out there and enjoy that island as well. So this section shows a cut right through the amphitheater. And what this does is it kind of shows you how some of those spoils can be reused. So when you're doing all these construction projects, you're going to end up with a lot of construction fill. And a great way to reuse that is to essentially sculpt the land and mold the land. So what this does is it creates a sloped amphitheater lot, looking at the stage. And then also, you know, it provides a great place for picnics. And if you mound it up that way, you have really good drainage and it really, really is a full use of all the construction material as well. Then what it also shows in this section is a view through the stage. So really creating that transparent stage that looks through to the lake and having a waterfront terrace up in that area as well. And one thing, you know, and you were thinking about too, is when you're not having concerts going on, you can actually leave the chairs and tables underneath the stage and it's a nice setting that way as well. So this view is sitting back, looking from the concession area, porching the stage itself. You can see the transparent stage, you can see looking right through that to the, to the lakefront. And just imagine, you know, all these people, obviously, a little bit further along with this social distancing. But, you know, those, those concerts and events happen in there and just being this amazing space right out on the waterfront. You know, the views of the lake, open views to the lake and really kind of activating, activating that space in the island. So this slide shows the conceptual architecture that I've just started to develop for the buildings on the island. We worked with Girtly, Girtly Architects. And we took a look at what the architecture style should be out there. You know, you have this historic architecture here that's really authentic to the park. And we wanted to create a style out there that was a little more unique and different from that. We didn't want to create a sense of fall of historicism out there. So you feel like these, these structures of wood beams and stone could be really unique and could really kind of create this island style, style architecture out there and park style architecture out there. Again, showing the transparent stage, looking right through there to the lakefront. And then also the concession building. So you have tickets for concerts in there. You would have concessions for the, for events and for vendors to kind of come in with your doors and as well as the backhouse for the, for the beach and just bathrooms for being right next to the, the playground as necessary. So I'll hand it over to David to talk about some of the elements that point to the destination playground.
Thank you, James. All right, so I want to reflect on what Steve and thinks that, that we really wanted to focus this exercise on concept and take a look at what the playground could be in terms of themes. And not get bogged down with individual elements, the individual playground equipment. So we took a look at what's out there now, what are, what's the potential for a destination playground? One of the first things that we kind of landed on was that we wanted universal access or inclusive access. And basically what that means is that visitors of all physical abilities have access to all playground elements, all equipment. So you can see a couple of examples of that. So we also don't find a concert. We also wanted to focus on nodes. So again, to make sure that it's inclusive, make sure that we are serving all visitors. We wanted nodes for very young children and then progressing up through ages. And even the adventure play area is something that was really more for, for an entire family. We took a look at incorporating actual elements, landforms, education. Make it, arrange them around the more traditional playground equipment so that it is a little bit more immersive. So that there was a sense of, so that there was a sense of imaginative play. And then finally, we wanted to focus on making this a regional attraction. So really having a marquee, unique element. And based on the setting right near the lake with the great views that we already have, we thought that incorporating an elevated walkway would be, would be a really great element to not only interact with the traditional playground elements as it interferes in meander, school run, but also enhance those great views that we have. So here's some examples. The two images are from the Wild Walk in Upper Lake, which is very, very popular. Like I said, it gets you elevated, expands your views and also kind of allows you to interact with the tree canopy and it becomes a different perspective. With that, I'll bring it back to James. So understanding these elements that we were incorporating. There's, we want to scroll on this mouse. This is different. I've never had this before. So just to explain a little bit of the technical bit. So this is how we wove all those elements together into this destination playground. Really created this exciting experience that you're not going to find anywhere else in Finger Lakes. You know, you, you can come into this island, imagine yourself coming over the bridge, then entering in from that right side there and starting to walk around on this outer pathway. So as you walk on that outer pathway, what we're doing is building that level up and really creating this experience where you then have an entrance onto that marquee element, onto that boardwalk. And then you can kind of lead yourself through that, through that boardwalk and get to that lower spot. And that's the moment where you have a view just elevated upwards, looking out over the lake, looking out over the buildings, something you're not really going to find anywhere else. That really unique, marquee element. And then what you do is you traverse back through the tree there. And it's kind of, that's where we're keeping some of the churches. It creates this kind of a treetop experience walking back through. So just something very unique, you know, that you're not really want, not really expecting all time. Looking at the playgrounds themselves. So we created the infant playground over on the right side here. Right side? I'm looking back. So left side is a smaller one, this is the infant playground. The center, which is the two to five playground. And then the right one, which is the, the five to twelve playground. So, so they're all right size for a destination playground to really include a lot of those exciting elements. So you really do have the space to really create that, that destination playground. The south is a splash pad area. So you have, you know, the, the area where our phones are and our hot data system out there in play. And then to the north, that little red area is actually an exercise equipment area where the adults can kind of exercise, they make exercise equipment that you can put in the park for them to. And all of this centered around that central node. So really thinking about that space as the exciting, active area on the island. So you have the bathrooms right by there, food court, food trucks. So something that, you know, really generating a lot of activity on the island. So then this view shows you that you're entering into the playground. So you can just see a little bit of that elevated boardwalk in the background there. And then some of the big pieces of equipment that you'll notice, you know, big towers, declining features, just stuff that's, you'll see this equipment in other parks to just map the combination of all of those exciting elements all in one place. Over to the, to the right, you can see the yoga pavilion. You know, we're also providing facilities, residential facilities throughout the whole park. And so other groups can kind of come in and rent those and do different activities in those. And then this shows that marquee element. So looking down from that central node up to it, what it essentially does is create a gateway going into the playground. So it's really this exciting experience, you know, where you have, you know, this, this active plaza out here and then this overlook right above you, looking out over the lake where you can see all the sunsets. And also the food trucks in the background and the destination playground as well. And then just to leave you with this image. So this is that moment when you get to the top of the elevated boardwalk and looking out, you can see the sunsets. The transparent stage, open views to the lake. It's just a really neat experience. And all this being universally accessible. So something that, you know, anyone can get to, it's all under 5% field trip. Hand it over to Doug now.
Thanks, James. Hello, everyone. Anybody sitting on that? Everybody okay? That's great. I'm going to go over, try to do the magic mouse here. We're going to run over now what our next phases are. We, this is a large plan. We obviously want to talk about how do we plan on getting from here to there? How do we plan on incorporating these designs into a phase plan so that we can get something that will help the ground now and continue to go down? So here's our phases. After looking at all the designs, we decided that the destination playground and the concession, that central core building are obviously key elements of this plan. The destination playground is a significant draw. It replaces some infrastructure within the park that we would like to replace. And then give us that, that sense of space right out of that. So what we want to do is centralize all the facilities around there. If any of you, like myself, have traveled to a playground in state with a three-year-old. So what we want to do is centralize all the facilities around there. If any of you, like myself, travel to a playground and sleep with a three-year-old and the restroom is more than 100 feet away, it can be a crisis, obviously. So those are always exciting and opportunities for us to provide better service, better customer service, a better customer experience, a better experience for anyone at the park while providing some critical services when needed. Uh, so we had, we took an opportunity here to, as Steve mentioned, to kind of open up the waterfronts to remove some of the developments, the buildings near the waterfront, to really pull all of that back, because those two very important things for us. You know, you put a restroom concession, picnic facility central to the island, yes, it makes significant logistical sense. But more importantly, it actually opens up what everyone comes here for. I, I don't think I've ever stood out on the island and talked to a park people or a guest or anyone there and had them facing White Ridge Room, had them, you know, looking over my shoulder at the back of the gas, that's really not what you come for. You know, so the ability for us to centralize some of these facilities in the, in the center gives us great opportunity with great services while, you know, opening up this the view that we have, the view that's behind you here as you look out over, over the water. Um, and obviously it's an opportunity to upgrade the facilities that are there. And it gives us the opportunity to have concessionaires to do all the things that as we, as we talked about in the programming plan, to have those facilities available for them. Those are revenue generating for the town, it's fantastic, but it's also services that are lacking as we have gotten feedback from the public. And these are the things that we want to try to provide. So we put those together and that, that's a significant amount of construction and investment. Um, but those are two that we think go hand in hand, you know, for the reasons that I've just kind of outlined. So phase two, so now we're talking about the concert thing. Um, it was, we had a re-conversation a little while ago about how we came to that location for the stage. And it's because that's where everyone who does an event here puts their thing out in that car, by that road tree, it's an iconic location. But doubly, it is not in the view shed that you come here to see. When you're actually literally standing on this, um, in the center of the island, where that location is is off, you know, to your right or to the west, it's kind of out of that view shed and come here to see right on the lake. But invariably, every event that we have uses that location. So we're trying not to reinvent the wheel, we're trying to increase the usage of this space, but also make it very useful based on what our annual events do every year. We want to provide them a great home for some of these traditional cultural events that happen here every year and provide them with this space if they continue and can grow. And it gives us the opportunity to grow concerts, it gives us the opportunity to, you know, grow different elements of programming that can be used up. So obviously we kind of put that in as that comes back. Um, included in that is that western seawall, so this is the western wall that you go out to the island uh, where the existing large shelter is and continue out toward that little, you'll see a concrete wall that's up there. Um, that doesn't need to be replaced. Uh, that is our opportunity right there, uh, to reestablish that not only as a, as a beautiful prime location, but also as a water access. It's very ironic to, uh, anybody who's boated up to the park and visitors who come here and put their boat in, that it is actually very difficult to get on a park property once you're on the water. Um, so in order to address that, in order to address a piece of infrastructure that really does need to be replaced, you know, we decided, hey, that's the right opportunity and that's the right location to put that there. Or are you going to have to put roadways to that area for the stage or access so it makes sense for us at that time to create a really professionally designed and well thought out, and, and again, we have to thank Probridge for doing that because we bring down this pile of ideas and they say, okay, this is how you put it together. And this is, and these are the questions that have been entered through the process and it really got us to this point where we're now adjusting this basic kind of access to the park and improving that bring room, including that side of the park at the same time. So then phase three, there's our new picnic shelters and then, uh, eastern seawall, uh, so I can describe both of those. Uh, we have, for example, this weekend, we have several bookings that are in the beach this weekend. And obviously in the era of the pandemic, we had even more than in an average year, started a couple of weeks ago, actually booking to the pavilions outside. Um, so we want to be involved for more, we want to be involved with more spaces. And as doing, doing that as a part of this design, what we're able to do is make it consistent architectural plans or the buildings fit, we're able to base them in over time, we're able to hopefully source products when they're not that economical as they currently are now. But as we go through those phases, I think the whole point is to lay out a great plan, which I believe we brought forward. Um, and then there was a, so there's a seawall, so what we have tried to do, um, would be on the eastern edge of our beach. So the beach that's on the island on the eastern edge where the land begins to move out toward the seawall. Um, Probridge is gracious enough to design for us a really, a really great element to get everyday accessible access right down to water touch. Um, that is, we have a lot of fishing that goes out in the park, we want to continue to encourage that. And it encourages, you know, our inner play, you and the water, it is, it's a really great element. And so it's, it's T-wall, it's natural materials, um, it's everyday accessible, but it's a place to get down and get right near the water that's accessible. And that is, that is a challenge in every park setting, and I think this is a way to address it. Uh, and, and we can show that on the boards and things after. And then obviously our next step is to secure funding, you know, and we want to do the support for phase one. You know, so we want to move forward with a collective effort between accounting and foundations that have approached us and organizations that have approached us at a previous meeting, you know, as we went through the program, you know, we had many organizations, but let's do a town, we want to do a town. And we really weren't able to do that at that point. With this kind of documentation, with this kind of comprehensive plan that lays out, as, as Steve told us, we put, really lays out how the components work together, how they work together, how we get to move down the road. And all of the things that aren't necessarily attractive and sexy, like infrastructure, power, water, all of those elements. Those are, those are all part of these conversations that have got us here, you know? And so from that, we want a new statement, we want a new fellow press, and you can work with the community. Anybody bring that checkbook? No? That's great. We didn't really want this to be a whole presentation where no one was really interacting, but we thought there was a lot of content at this year. Uh, we wanted to make sure that if there was anybody doing this virtually, they would be able to do the whole presentation. But I think moving forward, I think we'd probably love to do a little Q and A and I would invite everybody, uh, to ask a question if they'd like to. There is a microphone up here on the table, uh, if you'd like to come up and ask questions about that, and if I can't feel them, I will, uh, ask our, our team members the vacuum on those. But that is, that is the outline and that is the phase and the next step that we want to propose. And so I, I mean, I thank everybody for their time and their attention here. That is, that is the, that is our programs for all these questions. I mean, yes?
Uh, you didn't mention, but where's the parking in the beach area?
Great question. The question was, um, is there additional parking or where would additional parking be for, uh, particularly the concert venue or any of the programs that will happen on the aisle? That's a great question. We currently park several hundred parks on the plumbing side of the project, so off of the traffic circle. If you go out and line up, we are able to do that. Um, we have had a lot of internal conversations with the planning department about formalizing that parking and doing that as a, as a phase supplement for this. Or depending on how the concert venue funding goes, we would actually make those changes later there. Uh, Dave has been very successful putting together some grant with basis for us for green infrastructure parking. Uh, these are permeable pavement projects and things. We're actually doing one associated with Sterling Major Center project right now, uh, in Sterling. So that would be, that has been part of the conversation, it is not represented on here. Um, the design just, as we were primarily before, is the layout of the elements, but that is a conversation that we've had.
When you seen that the last time, you knew there was this mind to say that this part of the piece, the actual plans, something that you could show to have essential to start a fundraising process.
Correct.
And that's exactly where we are right now.
Yes.
For grants, foundation, anything. So the space four, you are ready or we are ready to kind of go out and show what we're showcasing and see where the money is coming from, is that?
Correct, that is correct. So when we had the programming conversation, the question was, when we had the programming conversation, we said, well, I can do this well. But now, the outcome of that was to say that we need something to be carried with us, we need something to be put out in the marketplace, we need something to bring to a foundation or a funding person, so this is what we want to build. We believe that this gives us enough location information and enough scale information to do those without tying a potential sponsor or partner to a specific style of architecture we use to set that. But this gives us the ability to kind of work with a funding organization to say, this is where, this is where we're going to go, this is where it's going to be, this is what it could look like. And as we go forward, like right now, the price of lumber is astronomical, maybe that, you know, informs some of those decisions, maybe current market forces or something like that. But this is the documentation, we're, we're very comfortable going out to the public and saying, yep, this is, this is what we want to accomplish for these reasons and, and we're happy to accept it.
I mean, you can't evolve what you want to do, I need to kind of figure it out?
Yes, yes, absolutely. Um, our design, our design group gave us, uh, or many of the prices for these, kind of as we have them, uh, as we have them broken out, you know, as the destination playground concession area, um, you know, the water fountain section. So we actually put those all out as elements and said, what is this individually? That obviously helps us too, if we start to look at scale of the grants and, and funding that's out there, it allows us to say, this is not going to fit in this grant or this is perfect for it. Um, so with those, with those scaled numbers, obviously being on the conceptual side, we don't, they're, they're high with contingency because you never know what's going to happen with lumber prices and things like that, but they do give us an order of magnitude.
Yeah, I'm, I'm curious, there are two kind of simple deal along the tracks for development. One is a destination playground and the other is a concert venue deal along. Why is it clear that the destination playground state one concert venue, space two, the other way around? Since it seems like the concert venue has the opportunity to, rather than to, to get to a fun destination playground. So what, what is the, the thinking?
So the question is what, how we got phase one versus phase two, or could they be flipped, or, you know, could one come before the other? I mean, we would make anything phase one that had funded, I would, I would say that. So if there's something there that was like, that, that just pops up, um, there is, uh, we have had more foundational supportive conversation in recent years about the destination playground, so we feel that that is most likely to be right off the bat. It would be supported to do that.
Okay.
Um, that's, yeah. Yep, that's, that's what's driving that conversation.
The only thing I would add to that is if we did the amphitheater first, and yes, I think it could jumpstart programming and jumpstart revenue, but I would still say that needs to be done in concert, like no pun intended, together with, um, the central concessions and, and the bathroom. So that's sort of like, that'll go with whatever is the first stage.
There was another question in the back. Yes, Matt?
I've drawn that far from here. Basically, my whole life, the focus of coming to the park is set up women. And towards our playground with the viewers over there, um, what is being done to improve both beaches? And where is this one you want to be over in Dopeville? Are the boats going to be parked in that area or off to the side?
Uh, no, it is off, the boat dock is actually off to the western side, like you can see if I can make this imagine happen. Um, actually, if you can see on this slide, the bottom is our existing beach and the wall that's over here on the left side, that's, that's the existing seawall that's there. That's where we were discussing putting the docks in there. And actually, as a part of this plan, would actually be an expansion of the current beach and adding new sand and actually pulling back the lawn, it's very close to the water there. Uh, so the current plan, as just as a design, is actually pull the beach back toward where the walkways are. It actually expands significantly the amount of beach that is there. The beach on this side of the park would remain, but as, as far as our primary beach and having the access, that really is the, the beach that we have open on a daily basis.
Yeah, so I think most people that have tried to swim there would agree that it's pretty thorough beach. And swimming there, you have to walk about a mile or two.
About a mile, maybe a mile and a half.
And you're still up to your feet, so what is going to be done, anything over on this side?
This beach, sure, the bulk of the beaches would be kept and maintained as beaches. Uh, and basically, another reason for that is that as you have large concert venue facilities out there, there may be times that that beach would not be accessible. Otherwise, if there was a, if there was some access to go put around the concert venue, we would have closed that beach. So we're going to be a superior, if we were doing a particular fact. So the beach over here does remain, and actually we have some funding in the budget right now, that could do, that should bring in standard, do some of that on, on the beaches.
Because you open, I started to think it's, it's a law that you have to have accessible bathroom within a certain distance from the beach.
Yeah.
Well, this, our traditional bathroom to the beach, ever been opened?
No, currently the rest of the beach that I actually got in that, that facility up there. Yeah.
I know it was closed because of the restaurant that you mentioned there. And they do want to open to the, this one, so since there's no restaurant, you have to, uh, you can't get, like, we have them.
There, there isn't a next year entrance to these, and we, and we handed over, right, and we handed over the contract for this facility to a contractor. They're actually, that actually not going to be built, that is a part of the reading.
A little bit if you open the, the system of the town.
These restaurants probably won't be, because you'd have to come inside the building to be closed.
Outside entrance.
Definitely.
And it's still there. Um, can you just unlock that door?
It's not currently being used there, but I understand.
Yeah, so obviously, could it be open?
Not currently with the contract we have with the vendor rules who runs the building for us.
Oh, the restaurant?
Yes, it's a catering company, yeah.
Okay, they still have that contract to this building in there?
Yeah, the entire facility.
Okay, when is that contract up?
Uh, three more years.
Okay, so we can't, so still, three more years?
No, but we're, we're happy that. It is. Sure, we're, we're, we're within the, we're within the justice, but it's a very long way, and we'd love to improve it, we'd love to put a, another, another luxury facility you know, closer to the water.
Could we do that though?
Sure, it wasn't part of this design program, but sure, absolutely.
Yes, sir. Doug, uh, this Probridge is their design-built example of what we have proposed tonight somewhere. I mean, it was nice, I was up in Boston at the Hyland Zoo and it was interesting with a three-year-old and all the kids a little older. We ran, we, you know, ran through the zoo and different exhibits and kids got tired and it was a good day in the park, you know? Is there some spacing in that?
So, so we've actually worked on Buffalo Harbor State Park, there's a playground up there, destination playground, uh, in the state park up there that we worked on. So we use that sizing for this, this playground essentially, so. Um, so if you're ever in Buffalo area, right on the water, that's just one you could work on. And let's say it costs the county right now three hundred thousand or something, a couple of grass and, and things, the buildings and everything. Would this new addition be, if we figured what kind of cost, if it would be associated, what kind of revenues we can generate that offsets something?
You know, the, the closest we got with revenues is the programming plan, they did provide us a small, like, concert venue facilities specifically. Um, I'd have to look at it, I don't know if I remember, if they built into the concession numbers that much, it was all pretty much built into the, the concert facility.
They won't go together depending on how many concerts you have, sixty-five, two-hundred, twenty-five thousand dollars.
So they. Correct, that was, they laid out that for, for concerts, fifty-five, two-hundred thousand dollars a year in revenue that was there.
That was, that's for tickets and for concession?
Oh, that was okay, that was particularly in sessions, I had it associated with. Sure, sure.
That's net, that's net.
That, that's net, that's net. Um, but your question is valid, just flat words, like, there are always maintenance costs for all of the facilities, this, you know, this building included. Where is possible to be outside and work this building and all of the other locations that we have, so there are costs associated with that. And that's why, um, it is, we talked significantly about what comes first, I mean, you know, you could make. I mean, you know, you could make yard or another, you know, a concert facility versus a general revenue. But that's, uh, not for this exercise, however, that doesn't necessarily be the actual construction process. Uh, yeah, process or. Other questions? Yep, you're back. Check in. So the question is whether the concession will be opened regularly, like regularly state allow, or it's not just under concert. Yes. And that was actually kind of born out of the programming plan that we had done where the fun was if you increase the wall time for every incremental piece of programming, that's a yoga class. That is someone coming here to rent kayaks. That is all of the significant incremental programming that you do, not just concerts. I mean, concerts are great because they are, um, you know, revenue generators, but they're also heavily from a staff interest factor. But there are many, many programs that we, pre-pandemic, had conversations with the Y S D A and with several other organizations about doing smaller programs. Those don't on paper individually look like large events because they're the ones that sustain concessions. They're the ones that sustain this well and this walk through and all of those incrementally increase your participation in other events like the theater, like the concerts, you know? So that is, that was their, their real push to us was that, you know, a beautiful location to consistently keep a full case of variety of growing of different size. But that also perpetuates concessions being open and vendors being near under the food trucks or permanent installations. And those are great opportunities for the public to come in and dwell and spend more time and utilize the park. And that is the goal. That is, that is where we're coming. Other questions?
What's the total estimated cost of construction?
The total estimated cost of construction in, in the phases, yeah. So if you want to look at these as, as we laid out in the phases, uh, the destination playground, concession concession, restaurant building. Yep. Um, we have a estimated cost of $6.2 million. So if that's a check in your role, they're right, I'm happy to run right down to the bank with it right now. Um, you know, waterfront docks, seawalls, they come in at about $800, $600, effectively. Concert venue is $3 million and that includes a significant amount of infrastructure that's out there. The concert, the concert venue itself, that has a cost to it, but there's, we're talking a blank slate up there. We're bringing in the power and the infrastructure and all of the, there including all the art spaces and walls. Those are the, those are the numbers you're talking about. Um, the West Access Bridge, the bridge that we have that comes out of the property, it's a $400,000 probably five. So again, if you take all those and start applying those to different buckets of grant funding, I would say that Mr. Nelson here has been very successful with that recently. We're installing bridges this, this week up in Cato. We're doing a trail, you know, those were all grant funded projects. So having this layout, having it here and having some order of magnitude prices gives us an opportunity to say, hey, this is who we're going out and looking for. Um, I think those are all the ones that we kind of have laid out there individually. Pavilion structures, they tend to be about a $100,000 piece depending on the size and scope of both. Um, and a lot of those facilities, these are, we've been sponsored and supported by different funding organizations. And so now that we have the design phone, we have the ability to go out and say, this is what we want to do. Use the, use what's there. And we want these to be long-lived, architecturally attractive, very well-designed and laid-out facilities that aren't really insane. Why don't we have this? Why don't we have this? So here, this is our, this is our, this is our look at it. This is our look at this there. Other questions? Chris?
Yeah. Um, first of all, I just wanted to thank you for presenting tonight. Thank you for this state that knows a lot of work from a lot of different people. And, uh, I'm really excited to see us here, uh, at this point. Um, I love what's being proposed, uh, especially the inclusive playground. Um, so I'm going to see that as part of one of the first things that we want to do. I did want to ask about, um, what are your, what are your thoughts on the timeline for these different components in terms of, uh, is there a projected timeline for securing wise? And then from that point, how long is the process for it from getting to, to the final build, build designs versus the stage that we're at now? Um, and what does that look like in terms of public engagement?
Sure. And I don't know, Steve, if you want to talk or if you want to talk about like the CFA projects or processes and things like that. But I would say that if you, if we were looking at, it's all dependent on fund, it's all dependent on the way to secure funding. Some of the processes are, are 12 to 18 months a lot of the time for work, you know, each state's CFA funding, um, foundations and other organizations obviously work a lot faster than that. They're just, they don't have this separate state process that we would run through to do that. So, I, I mean, obviously I've talked extensively with, with A L A N, we would like to see destination playground above the ground. You know, in a very short amount of time, now that we know where it is. And that was, one of the big questions was not, not can you get these materials, can you get the playground managers? As you're aware, are aware that we had this conversation and are coming to us, you know, as are some of the companies. So as long as we're, as long as we're ready to go forward with this plan, there are some elements that would, that could come above the ground, you know, in a year. Outside of that, it would depend on where, where funding moves out. And that's something that we have a conversation about all the time, but kind of matching up your plan with the time you can fund some of those funding.
If I could, Doug, and I believe everyone on the legislature is aware, um, not only have we packaged something that we can take to foundations and look for grants, which we've been actively pursuing, that I've seen with Dave and Doug quite regularly. Um, and we talked issue with offers and capital offers. Um, but this is a presentation to you today to consider our own investment in ourselves. And we are at a critical point in our history to have any flux of funds into our county to offset the cost of our investment. And the sooner that we can decide what that investment may be, um, the sooner we can start with projects. And I'd love to see that come from us first. And then, uh, as we continue to get answers from, from funding that we've already asked for, um, in an additional leverage, what we, what we can put into it, with additional funding from other, other areas. So, um, you're, you're also a primary audience tonight as well.
Uh, other questions?
Possibly this, I've no issue, but is there a wild lot impact on the building? And then my second question is particularly like elevated boardwalk area. Is there some kind of spines, perpentes or typical component or elements for that?
Yeah, I, I mean, I think Dave can talk really briefly, if you like, more detail on it. A lot of the elements that we currently have, for example, simple as we, as a part of the roadway construction or the pathway construction we completed, we're actually repairing the repairing buffers along the, the currents of the conversation for program development, minimizing the impact of our, you know, not only to the materials used, but just by the design itself. And we're, we're very conscious of the fact that we need to manage our stormwater on site and that we actually will maintain that on-site. We don't run off here at any point directly to the lake with new designs compared to that. So we're obviously sensitive to that. There are some industry standards to that and we're also trying to just go a little bit beyond that. Um, and the interpret signings that we have done is a conversation that we've had ongoing as a part of a large design plan to make sure that as we integrate any of these green infrastructure projects, not only with construction, but even with our land farming and, and that those are included in the programs that we have done laid out. It, it does, it's a little random for the scale, but it is part of the conversation. I mean, we'd like to highlight those things as we go forward and be a leader, uh, in making sure that our, our new impact is managed. Yeah.
I just, um, once construction goes on or any part of the park, like it's pulled off or construction going on or maybe for the community, great, great, or at the park go or some other things like how that, how construction impacts, um, you know, how.
Sure. The question is how does the construction going forward impact like ongoing events or ongoing programs? It's just hard to use it. Um, the phase design obviously done from a financial standpoint because I, I haven't seen anybody slide, um, $1,600 my way this, this afternoon. Now, the phasing actually gives you the pace that out. But more importantly, we also have, we all know here you have a relatively finite somewhat, so that where, those are where our events are. We would do everything to lessen the impact on those events and work with them very closely. We have in passing any of the construction that impacts on. Um, and then the phase design and playgrounds, those are able to be done. And actually individual nodes, you know, as you go out with programs, they're able to have some open rooms. But there are, there will be impacts. We would be on, basically on our side, I mean, our department to make sure that we minimize those. So that our investors go on and yet we can still get to pull them on the plans. Any other questions? Comments? Going once, going twice? Okay. Well, again, I'd really like to thank all of you for coming. I appreciate the legislative time. I think that we have been working on this significantly and the background a lot to make sure that this is out there. I think the team from Crowbridge has done a great job and obviously, uh, I couldn't do it without Steve and Dave and their team in planning. So I really, so thank you all for your time and chair.
Thank you very much. Uh, again, on behalf of legislature, I want to thank Crowbridge for, uh, being available for this presentation today. Thank you so much. And I do want to thank the planning team, Steve and Dave Nelson, all the work that has gone into this over the course of many years. We've had many meetings about this over, since I've been on the legislature this year since 2016. And Doug, don't stir up a spearheading of the work, um, that's been happening at this rate. Um, and I kind of jumped the drug, I'll stop calling when it says that's coming, but it's probably not, I'm not going to stop. So that's, I've been a little, um, kind of, uh, trying to push this one. I mean, advocate, yeah, that's, that's the language. Um, so I'm, I'm very, very excited, uh, that we have something today to share with the public and with the legislature. Um, just as an aside, you know, I have left this area for 12 years. I was born, raised in Auburn, came back to settle in Moscow, um, to bring my children here to where I grew up. And one of the first places we came was to the park with my children who were then two and four. And, uh, it broke my heart because, um, you know, the, the equipment that I had sort of recalled, even when I was eight, sitting in the front of here, um, you know, I'd really fall and disappear and, uh, they cried. And so I felt like, you know, what a, what a moment, um, you know? And I was so excited to come back there and show them all this, this beautiful area. And, uh, and, you know, be able to take a closer look at what was happening to the park in particular. Uh, as a whole, it's a very dear place in my heart and it does all of you. Um, so to be a part of this process, to be here today, to present something to you that we can possibly build and provide and add on to, uh, is a very wonderful moment. Um, looking forward to doing everything that we can as a letter to every one of you you kind of fingers work for, is to, uh, attract people to our area, to retain the people here and by offering, offering more family-friendly, um, and inclusive, um, offerings to our public. Then, uh, that's, that's really our turn as well. And also in addition, you know, we have this funding coming into the county. And this is an opportunity post-pandemic that we can really provide some tangible for our residents. We can gather again, we can have concerts, we can have family picnics, uh, family reunions. Um, all the things that I think that we really are, you know, deeply demanding to celebrate at this point. So again, I want to thank you and, um, I appreciate everyone here for coming out for your question. Okay, well, thank you. Does any legislator have anything to offer before we adjourn? If a motion to adjourn, please second in by standing, all in favor? All right, good evening, sir. Thank you so much.
Thank you for coming. If you want to see this a little bit closer, I know that many of you are quite a ways in the back. Please come up, be happy to answer questions about the design, about the one.